Grande Conscious Breathers Grande Breath Family Welcome Tap on in I don't have my mic today So if you can hear me, let me know Grande, Grande What's going on, James? Hey, what's, I see 369 here Greetings So a lot of things are happening in the world One of them, uh, Japan, a lot in Claire Perfect Yeah, Japan, Japan just, um, so something to note, it's not all of the government that resigned It's, no, I think a lot of people are jumping the gun And it's making the, making the headlines go hyper, hyperbolic, which is totally not true Now, what happened was the church That had something to do with Abe, Abe's assassination It's called the United Church, or United Church, one or the other, but basically Government actually got most of them to resign, like 70% of them resigned So it's not actually the whole, all the government resigned, no Prime Minister will still be the Prime Minister, at least last time I checked Prime Minister will still be the Prime Minister, last time I checked Alright, now I'm, I'm doing too much here Uh, but yeah Been trying to learn more, so I wanted to, I wanted to bring up that topic because Uh, the topic of Japan resigning should show you guys The governmental bodies that they detached themselves from You know That body that was once attached to the government in a sense You know, they had something to do with, or they allegedly has something to do with Abe's, Abe's killing Or assassination, not just killing, it's actually an assassination, right? Yeah, we're just vibing here, catching, catching sunset instead of catching drama Hey guys, catch more sunsets, catch more sunrises instead of drama It'll, it'll change your life for the better, I promise you And I have, I have been doing this for years where if I don't catch a sunrise, I at least catch a sunset At least five to 10 minutes of it See, that's the easiest, one of the easiest meditations you can possibly do One of the easiest, and the sun is readily available, it's right there It's, it's a powerful practice you can start doing It'll help cleanse up your day, help up, it'll help build circadian rhythm Cause a lot of you sleep late at night, so At least incorporate that, you know, incorporates practices like that to really help project you forward, cause You know, you can do so many different things, but at the same time, you're just doing, you're just doing, right? That's where people fall to the mundane of life, even though On the outside looking in, people may say like, "Oh man, your life is spectacular, I wish I had your life, I, I wish I was your, your, your shoes," etc., right? But with your own perspective, with your own journey, with your own life Some of you or some of us may feel mundane at certain points in time, right? Cause you can, you can't really, not, not many of us have that luxury to just shift their environment too much, right? But the one thing you can shift that has an interaction with your environment is your breath and your mental state Because those are the steady constants, right? So if you can shift within that parameter Sooner or later, you'll start to see and what starts to manifest is your whole environment starts to change So with that being said, Brett Dojo 7 is going to be hosted here in Miami, August 28th Also, for the second time, we're allowing people that are, that's not in Breath Family To also be part of Brett Dojo 7 So also, if you notice, I have a subscription button on my Instagram now, I guess I don't know what to think, I don't even wanna even put it out there, but Uh, now I'm taggable, I'm now taggable, I'm not shadow ban, uh Not saying the whole word, but I'm now taggable, which is very important Cause now I'm not, I'm not too close to just being wiped off the face of Instagram anymore, right? So ever since I started talking about scaler Ever since I started talking about scaler, that's when everything just started to be like, "No, not happening, not today" What's going on? No And speaking of, I just uploaded, um, I just uploaded, if you own a scaler, I just uploaded The facts of why this is a great combination to it And the sun So if you own a scaler, be on the lookout for that playlist And some other more interesting things, uh, that I haven't even shown on Instagram or in public at all I'm just waiting for a few things to arrive, and those who come in for Brett Dojo 7 Even if it's not in person, you're going to feel some, some pretty wild things, and you're gonna be among the first To feel what I'm gonna be putting out in the world starting September And I'm gonna, I'm gonna be blasting out a free scaler video That'll target maybe anxiety, I don't know, what's a great general one, guys? Anxiety, inflammation Because that exact video is actually going into a gym in Croatia, cause I'm partnering up with them, I'm actually going to be Um, scaler sponsoring it, so Can't wait to get my scaler, oh, you ordered one, okay, fire What's going on? Peace and harmony, peace and harmony, guys, peace Yeah, so I wanna dial back to what happened in Japan real quick, because that's so important, and it should show you You know, just because it looks nice and shiny to build your own tribe outside of society, etc. Doesn't guarantee certain factors that all communities have to deal with That's, you know, that's the point blank period, you know, there's, there's a community in India that's technically off-grid, right? And unfortunately, there's a lot of rape cases going on, it's called Oroville And man, Oroville was once in my great graces, in my mind, of a place that I personally wanted to be a part of and, and disappear to You know, if it wasn't for the, the, the plan Demic or whatever, I had, I had a couple options, I had Africa, I had Oroville, which was part of it And Oroville, as soon as those new, the news came out, what's happening over there, I was like, alright, cutting that out, not happening And Jamaica, so Africa, Jamaica, and Oroville, and Wur dang mountain was a bit of a stretch So Yeah, that, that would have been that Greetings, greetings Yeah, so going back to those communities This is why it's so important to pay attention to your shadow And just because you wanna leave the city or leave society, however you wanna deem that, that in itself is somewhat your shadow, right? And what do I mean by that? I mean, before you leave, or if it's not a stretch, do what you can inside your communities And then, and then, I'm not saying then leave, if you can go back and forth, if you wanna do something like that, regardless, it's important Why? It's important because those behaviors That is not in symmetry with harm, harmony, or uplifting another human being Why would you, at the end of the day, you know, why would you still want that to fester In your surrounding environment? Just because you're off-grid, away from the city, etc., that But it's still somewhat your surrounding environment, which is very important That's why, that's why, um, I've always Was very weary about, uh, certain cults, um, certain off-grid cults, if you will Not mentioning any names out there, but You know, you know, they say, "Hey, come live out in nature," and then all of a sudden, you're ending up back in the city, and then Whole bunch of stuff, you guys know who I'm going off and about, but he actually wanted me to join at a certain point, which is hilarious And I say that to say, you know, going back to what happened with Abe, the Prime Minister, and how it's connected with the church It's super important to note, just because you go to another community or another space It, it doesn't Block you, or Or shield you from Certain happenings that is in disharmony, and that's, that's the plain old truth That's, that's really being real here, that's, that's real And if a leader or tribal leader or someone doing anything off-grid tells you that, "Hey, we're shielded from this and that" You should think very weary, you should, you should be very weary, you should be aware, you should cover all your grounds in so many different ways And at the end of the day, if you really don't know these people, that you're, you know, you're going into a space That, you know, deep down, you said, "Hey, my heart is in this space," etc., I feel like it's a great fit Think twice, think three times, three times over, three times over, cause don't get me wrong, there are beautiful communities out there That even before they set up off-grid communities, etc., I think a bunch of them is in Costa Rica, which In my opinion, is the number one spot, in my opinion, for off-grid, uh, communities, because some of those communities in particular Did a lot of things within their communities before even going off-grid So when you're looking at off-grid communities, look into the history Look into the history, because the history will tell you how deep and sincere they really are Okay? So keep, keep that in mind, keep that, be very aware of it, and And also just keep that as one of the tier things on your list That you want to focus on when looking at certain communities before joining, or living off-grid in that sense So that's so important, because you don't know who or what, and the church that Japan is somewhat splitting away from, etc. You know, it goes to show you, you don't know who's who in certain communities and aspects, right? So if you were part of a community that started off in the beginning, which is very important You know, you, you've seen the groundwork and you've seen the infrastructure, to the point where you can just, maybe just build your own community And maybe be a next door neighbor type of thing, and then build it, and build and build, and then, hey, build more communities and more communities Because exactly the same exact community that is in Costa Rica, it, if you go to, I would say It'll be one out of maybe six, one out of six communities out there that'll tell you that, "Oh hey, oh yeah, we're connected," or "We're partnered with" This community over there, that's maybe a flight away or something like that, because Those same leaders go around and help build another community, then build another community, then build another community And again, it's so important to get the background and the history of that community Or the starting points of like, "Hey, why is this starting? How is it starting?" And is your past history of working with the system in a way, I know, whatever But at least if there, if there was any sign of compassion towards This society that we live in, then that's a great, great marker, in my opinion, to join a community like that Super important Yeah, cause I could tell you, there's a bunch of yoga spots, yoga studios that I went to and, and tried to see if scaler could help, etc. But, hey, people are not who they say they are, right? And I just focus on what I can do, I'm, I'm done pushing for anything, it's like If things align, things align, and I stay in my own lane, focus on what I can create and co-create And it's working, it's working wonders, it's working wonders to the point where I never imagined it going at a certain point, so You're also going to hear of, uh, the Croatian Gym in Croatia that is Introducing our scaler technology along with the screens And, uh, the layer, the different layers of scaler being implemented into that gym, it's, it's gonna do wonders Yeah, stay in your lane, exactly, exactly, stay in your lane Stay in your lane, so Brett Dojo, we're gonna do a mini-session right after this, but Brett Dojo is August 28th It starts 3:00 AM Eastern Time, and we go every three hours You can join in anytime you want, you don't have to join in at 3:00 AM, let's say you wanna join in for the 7:00 AM Regardless, regardless, you get a, um, uh, you get playback, you get playback of the whole Brett Dojo On top of that, if you come in person, you still get the playback, but if you come in person, you can leave, come back whenever you want There's also sauna, pool, and a lot of scaler devices that will be Implemented into the space that I have yet to show any, anyone on, in public, and I don't think I will I don't think I will yet until actually October in Mexico, if you're gonna join us there Check it out, the tickets are on the website under Events, and man, that is a big cloud The sun is still peeking out there, but that's a big cloud, really big cloud Greetings, 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 yeah, we hosted Brett Do, Brett Dojo 6, this will, honestly, this might be the last Brett Dojo of the year If I'm being honest with you, cause we come right back from Mexico around October, and then Maybe in November, maybe, I might do another one Which, what part of Mexico? It's gonna be in Akuma, so it's in the middle of Tulum and Cancun Yeah, we're gonna tap into a mini-session very soon So it's gonna be a three-day event, the tickets are also on the website as well, under Events And I thought somebody wanted to join in live, but they do not, and that's okay What I wanna do Is, I wanna, can I do dual? How do I do dual? I could just do that, alright, let's just do that then Alright, so, I just want that in the corner, cause like, why not? What days? Oh yeah, so it's October 21st to the 23rd And there's accommodations, so there's space to sleep, you guys don't have to worry about that And I think the first tier ticket is fairly cheap compared to, um, the after sale, so keep that in mind And I'm really pumped to see Mexico, I'm so pumped to see Mexico, experience Mexico for the first time Uh, mine is the 22nd, hey, beautiful, beautiful way to experience, uh, your birthday, or your breath day, as I like to say Uh, what is the water doing? The water is vortexing, it's creating a vortex And it's creating more oxygen in the water, so honestly This water Goes hand in hand with ozone water You know why it goes hand in hand with ozone water? Cause ozone, ozone water, it, you're shifting from O2, H2, you're shifting from H2O To H2O3 Which is, which is very important, and very beneficial for the cells overall A lot of people don't talk about ozone water enough, and they should, cause that's honestly more important than alkaline water In my opinion Because, um, there's actually a bunch of studies with ozone, ozone therapy, doing wonders for people who have Sickle cell and many different other blood issues Now, the type of ozonator is also super important, because you can get one from Amazon or another source, etc. And you're not gonna get the most benefits, because there's actually a certain parameter of, uh, certain UV light And also a specific, uh, um, a specific range of electro, electrodes you actually wanna use when creating ozone water Because some products out there will actually use too much, especially UV Use too much UV or too much, um Or they'll add some other type of gases that's infused into it So that's another thing you definitely want to be aware of, and if you go on Amazon, you type in ozone water You'll see a whole bunch of different mixed reviews, some angry reviews So that's why I stayed away from Amazon or any, anywhere else that has the ozonator The ozonator that you really want is from SOTA, and The main reason why I got it from SOTA too, because Bob Peck was actually part of that company before he passed So Bob Peck is someone you all should definitely know, he's, he's one of the main persons that also talked about scaler back in the day as well Yeah, SOTA, S-O-T-A dot com, I'm not getting paid for this at all, whatever So SOTA was one of the main companies that Bob Peck used, um, sorry, was a part of And inspired them to make the ozonator the way it is beneficial, the most beneficial for human consumption And not just human consumption, you can literally bathe in it, you can do different ozone therapies Sticking it up your arm if you wanna do that, or enemas, which is more practical, in my opinion, that I get Uh, I tell my clients about to utilize Uh, another way of utilizing it on the skin, it's also a lot more powerful than soap and bleach Yeah, and it's less chemicals And you can put your fruits, and let's say your vegetables Um, and you put the vegetables in there, and you fill it up with water, then you put the ozonator in there You'll see it just cleans, and any pesticides, anything that was sprayed on your vegetables, cleansed It's honestly a powerful tool to get to, also, in my opinion, a pre-workout for breath work You know, if anyone always asks me like, "Hey, what should I do before breath work?" It should be the vortex water, water with the ozone, because now you have the oxy, oxygen saturating the cells And then you're going into the breath work session, powerful combo, powerful combo On top of that, it is more beneficial than a hyperbaric chamber, in my opinion And it's actually more practical, and less costly, so you can pay hundreds of dollars and keep on going back to the hyperbaric chamber Back and forth, or invest into an ozonator from SOTA And then, when you drink the water, it's the exact same thing that's happening in the hyperbaric chamber Or instead of paying thousands of dollars, etc. For owning a hyperbaric chamber or, uh, doing a bunch of sessions Compared to Kangan, compared to Kangan It's, it's not gonna mess up your, your stomach, your, uh, the layers of your stomach over time, that's one If we're talking about alkaline water, but the thing with Kangan I mean, you can do neutral water, I don't know if neutral water, uh, still gets electrified or whatever But in my opinion, it would be even more beneficial to, for Kangan themselves to look into ionizing the water Utilizing scaler electricity, instead of plugging it in and using that type of electricity to ionize the water, in my opinion That's why the scaler device that we have, um, the Zeus, you can actually supercharge the water Using scaler electricity that's more harmonizing for the body, instead of, in my opinion, dirty electricity But it's still a charge, don't get me wrong, still a charge But again, I'd rather have scaler electricity ionizing the water instead of the one that you just plug in So that's where I stand, and again, I didn't show you, I'm gonna show you a bunch of videos harmonizing that And, uh, the scaler devices with, with the scaler electricity in, in that regard But regardless, you saw the testimonial of a lady giving her testimonial and her experience Using plastic distilled water onto the scaler, and she could no longer taste the plastic, which is Super potent, super powerful in itself, so If you're asking layers, it would, it would be starting off with Distilled water, which is the easiest water to, to structure And then placing it on the scaler and running a bunch of different programs that you want to target in the body, or you're focused on You can even run vitamin deficiencies, and watch that, watch what that does to someone who is quote-unquote vitamin deficient In the span of 30 days In the span of 30 days, you give them that water that's on the scaler, running vitamin deficiencies, and I think the max Programs, I see Melanie in here, the max program run, I think is about like 30 minutes? 30 minutes max, so the water doesn't even need to be on there for more than 30 minutes, which is very, very powerful And then you're running that in that vortex, now it is structuring the water at a deep, powerful level That is structured water, and then we can get onto those type of machines, etc., etc., etc. But something to note about oxygen and ozone, it's magnetic I'm gonna say that one more time, it's magnetic That ozone water is magnetic If you were to pour liquid nitrogen and all those other gases into I'm gonna post that video, I gotta find that video, but you can find on YouTube somewhere, pouring liquid nitro, sorry, liquid oxygen And they poured all those different gases, but then when they poured the liquid oxygen into the middle You could actually see the oxygen actually staying mid-air and creating that vortex mid-air And harmonizing with the magnetic force, so oxygen is magnetic, and I said this before One of the characteristics of breath, magnetic Now we're, now we're going beyond the sit-down session here, that's what Alchemy Breathwork is about Bringing the aspect of the sit-down session into everyday life Your exact exhale that you take travels three to five days around the world, come right back to you What is that? It's magnetic, it's a magnetic ask, it's a magnetic force, it's, it's a magnetic characteristic of the breath It's not just air, it's not just this, it's not just that, one of the characteristics, it's magnetic And that's one of the most foundational laws of physics The most foundational, easy-to-comprehend law of physics, so what's also magnetic? This, this vessel here is magnetic, it's running on a magnetic propulsion, so I say that to say, don't exhale what no longer serves you, that exhale does serve you Exhale more life into what serves you, how about that mantra? Instead of exhaling the bullshit, exhale more life into what helps you grow Exhale more life into people who create harmonic resonance So scaler, it's part of nature, it's part of the earth we live in, and And it's a communicator, cause we are scaler. So why aren't we using scaler devices? Right? Of ancient times of old, they understood this. They understood the organic way of doing things, the organic way of building things to actually help aid Mother Nature into what she is already doing. That's why there were a lot more pyramids than there are in this whole entire world that we know of. Way more. And just the pyramid structure alone, forget about electricity, et cetera. The pyramid structure alone helps. Plant growth helps, the environmental resonance. It was no sitting as coincidence as I saw a bunch of birds just flew in where, when I, when I went to go visit the pyramids. Whole bunch of birds just kept on flying by in and out. There were way more birds towards the pyramids than the actual city. So what does that tell you? What does that tell you? Our ancestors were more than cave people. Our ancestors were more than six and films and hunters. Our ancestors were very sophisticated people. And I, hopefully I do a live with alkaline humanism, uh, soon. Cause he's, he's reading how, all the way in the eighteen hundreds, they were documenting how the ancients were using certain amulets that emit scaler. They were using certain amulets that emit the scaler waves and frequency without any wires, et cetera. Like, uh, like I was explaining in the, in the scaler video, if you own a scaler, uh, check out, check out the updated playlist. So I'm gonna update the playlist right after this live. But I was explaining how utilizing the sun, the scaler plate and the vortex. How you're creating resonance. And you can actually do it before and after. If I were to freeze that water and just pour out another water and put them side by side in the freezer, you'll actually see more structure in the water that was on the scaler versus not on the scaler. And another thing I wanna share, and I'll upload this later, how they use clay to preserve their food. Instead of a, a refrigerator or a freezer, they actually use clay to preserve food, fruits, and all different types of stuff. And there's actually video of, I think it's still in Iran, they still do this, cause they're keeping the culture. But in Iran, they'll show you six months of grapes, fresh pomegranates, fresh bananas. Six months in that clay and they open it. And you'll see it's still fresh as if, if it was just picked off from the tree. Again, our ancestors were not just sticks and stones, let's go hunt. Simple, everything's, no. The fact that there is DNA on meteorite. Maybe we're not even from this planet. And actually, the dogan and un buntu will actually preach that. They'll tell you that. They themselves will tell you that. That we have history beyond earth. They themselves will tell you that. We're talking about old, old cultures beyond what you know in terms of cultures. And there's tribes that go way beyond the dogans. So that's something to, to note, something of why I'm so passionate about scaler in itself. And what, what it's leading to because certain, certain geometrical shapes, certain house shapes have such an impact on the human biology. All those humans fit in that particular box. I am blessed that I live in a space that literally looks like the Itin Itu Pyramids, super blessed in that aspect. But if it's, if a place is too boxy, if a place is too whatever, it actually does have an impact on life, on the life form. We're definitely not from this planet. Yeah, and you know, well, if we do end up going live, oh, here's the sun peeking out. If we end up do going live and we, we tap into, uh, the ancient scaler, et cetera. You know, now we're gonna be tapping into beyond the ice wall. And what about those civilizations that technically, in my opinion, they're probably a thousand years beyond what we are. Beyond, beyond that. And these are in ancient texts, these are in ancient books. And these are books coming from the eighteen hundreds that are talking about the ice wall, going beyond the ice wall, passing through that layer, going on to the other side. And in, and exchanging with certain cultures, et cetera, right? So when are we going to tap in? When are we gonna get on that wave? I couldn't care less. I'm just focused on what I can do. And that's what we, we all should focus on. And going back to the tribal aspect, again. You don't wanna just join up any tribe. Because if, if they're doing, if they're creating what they're creating outside of the community, you know, there's also other factors you really need to focus on in the aspect of, okay, there's less law enforcement, so it could get people to act a certain way. Right? Everyone's running away, running away to do this, to create this outside. But at the end of the day, we live on planet earth. This is one big ass community, in my opinion. And don't turn your back. Don't turn your back on the rest of the world. The rest of the world is still also going to be learning from you outside of the communities, right? Cause when they go visit and they see how life is, are you thriving or are you surviving? Which is one of the key factors I saw in Oroville, unfortunately. They were, they looked like everyone's just trying to survive type of thing. And the unfortunate thing with the rape case and all that stuff was a big turnoff and it just left a, a, a bad taste in my mouth because you know, of course not all the communities are, are like that, right? They're not all like that. But again, you need to cross your Ts, cross your dots, et cetera. And not all the time you have to build a community. What about just being sovereign, learning about certain laws and learning your birthright, things of that nature and learning how you can actually use that to build even certain communities within this infrastructure and still utilize free energy, sustainability. But maybe even creating ripples to the point where like, hey, we have this amount of power, et cetera. Let's go buy that building and shift that building to a certain way. Oh, we have this much power, okay. Oh, we have this from the IRS. Alright, we know how to utilize this paperwork. Alright, let's go to that building and buy that building right now and shift it a certain way. Right? Instead of going outside, because mind you, society's not getting any smaller. The cities are not getting any smaller. You think they're just gonna let you be outside? So it always goes back to the human being, right? That's why I feel like things like breath patterns or people who focus on mental health. It's so important because that's gonna send ripples into everything, everything. That's why it's so important. Oh, breathing this, breathing that. Breathing is a lot. Breathing affects your whole life. If, if you're breathing more consciously, you're gonna make more conscious decisions. If the president did more breathwork or many world leaders did more breathwork or was privy to it, don't you think the, at least, society would be a little bit different in a way? So that's something to look out for, for the scaler video. I'm doing this for free as well. Where the first scaler video for the public at least, I've been doing this for months. Um, targeting different things, but for the public, what do you guys think? I think targeting anxiety. Um, maybe I'll put in the program to breathe easier. And there will be subliminal breathwork music in the background as well. But it'll be a scaler video where you can have playing. And there'll be an option for you to actually download, but for the, if you're part of Breath Family Members Group, or if you're part of the subscription, um, you're also going to get that. So I'm gonna give you a synopsis, the difference between Breath Family and the Instagram subscription. So the Breath Family group, you're getting everything. You're literally getting everything. Um, you don't even have to pay for the Breath Dojos. But for the subscription group, uh, I will be uploading every week type of thing. And, uh, you won't be getting everything, but any new releases that I make, it's not like you're gonna have access to the whole library, but you will be getting access to releases where you can download. Also, Breath Dojo will also be for free as well. If you wanna come in person, you get a discount as well. So, so that's something to also note, the difference between the subscription on Instagram and the Breath Family Members Group. Of course, the subscription on Instagram is a lot cheaper. So if you're more residing in that aspect, go sign up. Um, little mini breath sessions here and there, but again, the Breath Family Members Group has all the courses. Um, we're tapping into sun breathing. We're on week number three. We're on week number three of sun breathing right now. You can get it. Somebody wanted to go live? We can go live. And then we're gonna tap into a mini breath session towards the end. Thank you guys for sticking along. Someone goes, I need to start doing breathwork. Well, today's your lucky day. We're gonna tap into a mini session. Trying to add this person on live, except. I don't know if it's because I have these two things going, he's not joining in. Uh, yeah, sun breathing is different from sun gazing. I mean, it's, it's in there. And I go into different ways of utilizing it, like flex breathing. And a lot of things I don't see anyone talk about when it comes to sun gazing at all. That's all in there in terms of the sun gazing protocols. Unable to join. Alright, that's, whoa. What was that? Okay. Unable to join. Alright, that's cool. Alright, any more questions? Yeah, breathwork is the key to self-awareness. It is. The more you can breathe, the more you can feel. And the more you can feel, the more you can heal. And the more you can heal, the more you can deal. Always remember that. My, if I work with somebody in chronic pain, you know, it actually may be something completely different than they thought it was, which is my favorite like aha moments. It's like, ah, yeah. You thought it was your neck, but it was really your kidneys. Ah. Thought it was your back, but it was really your mouth breathing. Oh, I do a lot of breathwork, et cetera, but my back still hurts. Stop doing mouth breathing. Stop doing breathwork with your mouth. Thoughts on wisdom tea? Oh, what are you, if you gotta get it pulled out? Soak it in urine. Urine flushes. I mean, urine rinses. Or ozone, ozone water. Ozone water rinses, super potent and powerful in terms of cleansing. Cleansing the gum, cleansing, and helping to heal a lot faster as well. Uh, someone goes, mental or sun breathwork to, to start? Ah, it's, it's up to you. It's honestly up to you. And he's referring to the ten-week mental breathwork courses as well. Someone goes, cysts in lungs. Uh, DM me. That's an in-depth session with the scaler and a whole bunch of different things. Yeah, urine helps. It does. Can people help with, can pe- So I think your question is, can it help with sister? Yes, it definitely can. I've worked with a few people. It can help. Someone goes, oh, drink plasma, yes. Uh, someone goes, I'm new to it and I'm loving it. Well, congrats. Welcome to the plasma world. I've been putting plasma more topically these days instead of ingesting it. So that's another thing, another way to utilize it. Uh, every time you go pee, you can like put in your belly button. A lot of people don't know about the belly button. The belly button has over sixty-four thousand nerve endings. Oh man, this is beautiful, this is. Over sixty-four thousand nerve endings. And yeah, it's like you're putting the umbilical cord back in there all over again in terms of the fluids and the connectivity. Cause urine is not just liquid, it has a charge. It has a negative charge. Which is, which is why, one of the reasons why it's so healing, right? So that's another thing about ozone water as well versus, uh, conge. The ozone water also has a particular charge as well. Naturally. Beyond the aspect of ionization. That's why when you ozone your water and it starts to go in the atmosphere. And key thing, if you're gonna ozonate your water, definitely have the windows open. You don't wanna keep it too much embarked, but hey, it's great for cleansing out any odor. But one of the things you will notice when you're ozonating the water is your body starts to tingle a little bit. Um, before even ingesting it, right? Because it's creating the ozone layer in the atmosphere. Again, it has a charge. So that's that tingling feeling you're feeling all over. So it's like you're bathing in that ozone. You can also do ozone baths. Yeah. But it has to be warm. That's another thing. It has to be warm or cold. The colder, the better. Cause the colder, the more colder the water is, the easier it is to capture and hold the ozone, the, the oxygen. Uh, yeah, and the belly button. It's really stem cells, so that's, that's the main use case. It's like the umbilical cord, you're putting the umbilical cord back in a sense, cause when you were in the womb, what were you engulfed with? You were engulfed with your own urine. You're engulfed with your own urine, spitting it out or it come through the urethra and it looping it back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, until you're born. Yeah, so embryonic fluid, exactly. Alright, who is ready to tap into some breathwork or some alchemy breathwork? Again, Breath Dojo is available for anyone that wants to come here in Miami. I'm gonna have a lot of tools and, and, uh, toys to play with, with scaler that I haven't shown um, in person and you're literally going to be walking into a vortex. That's all I'm gonna say. And I wish I was part of, um, Art Basel this year. I think I, I might be, I still might be. We'll see. I gotta get on the phone after this, but if I'm part of Art Basel, the place that I can imagine, that I envision of bringing this to life in terms of scaler, you will feel the vortex of energy when you walk into that place. If we, if we end up doing it, I promise you, I promise you, or your money back. If, if that place ends up being a real thing, we'll see. Thanks for that. I'll try that tonight. Yeah. So the thing is, um, if you can keep it hydrated throughout the day, it will help. it will help a lot of gut issues you have. It will help a lot of, uh, it'll help with bowel movement. That is the number one thing you will start to realize. And even if you just put in your belly button, you don't drink it, et cetera, et cetera, it'll still feel like you drank it. And that belly button, it's the center of your body for a reason. Alright, guys, so now that I'm taggable as well, uh, I wanna lay this out here and give you guys an opportunity to win one of the scaler pendants for free. So all you have to do after we're done this session is tag me on Instagram and share your experiences, what you felt doing this breath work we're about to do, we're about to tap into. So, you are going to go at your own pace. You don't, you don't have to follow me. It's not about following me. It's about harmonizing and utilizing what we all are creating in this exact moment in time with the scaler and breath at the same time. So that's a beautiful thing about breath, that breath and thought is a scaler connection in itself. Cause what is thoughts? Thoughts is a form of scaler, just like your auric field, just like the magnetic toroidal field, the torus. It's all connected in that exact divine connection. So, we're gonna start off with the right nostril. So we're gonna take a regular inhale and you're gonna let out a three-part breath while covering your right nostril. Regular inhale. Covering the right nostril. And again, it's a three-part breath. I don't know if you guys can hear me, but I'm gonna demonstrate again. A three-part breath and you're covering the right nostril. So you're letting that on the exhale. And then when I say relax, breathe in complete silence. And then I'm going to say, now we're going to the left. And when I say left, you're actually gonna cover your right nostril and then exhale three. So regular inhale, covering your right nostril, exhale three. Regular inhale, covering the, the le- the left nostril, sorry. Exhale three. And then I'm gonna say relax. And then I'm gonna say switch, covering the right nostril, exhale three. Regular inhale, cover the right nostril, exhale three. Alright? So remember, go at your own pace. And we're gonna start in three, two, one, let's go. Relax. Still breathe only with the nose. Regular inhale, regular exhale, and really slow it down. Next round, switching, covering the left nostril. Take a regular inhale, exhale three, covering the le- the left nostril. Go at your own pace, starting in three, two, one. The slower, the better. Let's go. Relax. Breathe silently where you can't hear the breath at all. Regular inhale, regular exhale. I want you to take the deepest inhale you possibly can and the deepest exhale. Go at your own pace. Alright, next round. If you guys are just joining, we're tapping into a mini breath work session. So we're taking a regular inhale, exhale three, regular inhale, exhale three. If you have done mental breath work, you know for a fact this is great for the echo breathing. So during the calm down session, tap into the mental breath work with the echo breathing. And I'm sure you're going to really feel that one, cause there's such a contrast there. And go back into that rewiring phase and the contrast and how it felt back and forth. So tap into that. So if you're just joining, we're taking a regular inhale and then we're taking a three partial breath out. We're covering the right nostril first. Three partial breaths out on a full exhale. And then doing that a couple times, and then I'm gonna say relax, and then I'm gonna say switch. And then we're gonna switch to covering the left nostril on the exhale three. Alright, go at your own pace. You don't have to follow me. Go at your own pace. And we're gonna start in three, two, one, let's go. Relax. Breathe where you can't hear the breath at all. If you're trained into the mental breath work, this is great for echo breathing in this exact moment in time. Next round on the exhales, we're covering our left nostril. Go at your own pace. Regular inhale, exhale threes. Relax. Breathing only with the nose. Breathe where you can't hear the breath at all. Deeper and deeper exhales. Really slow it down. Swallow, swallow, swallow your saliva. Inhaling what the body needs. Exhaling more life into what the body needs. Now take the longest inhale you possibly can and take the longest exhale you possibly can, ending off the round. Thank you all for sharing the breath. How we feeling? How we feeling? So guys, if you're interested in winning a necklace, Melanie says amazing. Fire. Lighter and clearer. Sweet, guys. Yeah, thank you for sharing the breath. Thank you for at least trying it, right? At least trying it. Thank you. It's, it's a beautiful thing, turning a lot of non-believers into, into believers. Well, not even to believers, actually people who are actually like practicing it. Cause once you get a taste and you see like, wow, my breathing did that? Uh, someone goes, "My right nostril was stuffed." After doing that, stuffiness is nearly gone. I felt, I feel so good. Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Head feels more clear, oxygen saturated now. Yeah, that's something to note. Your, your sinuses don't just end up here. They go all the way up to your brain. So the more this is cleansed, and you can also do that with breath work, of course, but also, uh, saltwater flush or ozonated, ozonated flush, which is still powerful as well too. And what I mean by that is literally chugging the water up your nostrils and then it'll help flush out any mucus that's like trapped in your sinuses or up here, excess mucus that's trapped in there and get like a big flush out. So if you go in the ocean, if you go in, on the beach or whatever, you go inside the ocean, uh, just take a dive, pinch your nose, come back up and shake your head back and forth. That way the saltwater can go back and forth. And then you'll blow out a whole bunch of mucus. Alright, someone goes, "Why one nostril at a time?" Uh, so it just gives another impulse layer, if you will, to the mechanics of the breathing. Since your body and your subconscious is so used to breathing with both layers, when you cover that one up, now your, your brain is thinking, hey, where's oxygen? Where's the oxygen? Where's the oxygen? So that's one of the, the factors that a lot of people don't talk about when it comes to alternate nostril breathing, but that's another layer, if you will, to really say like, hey subconscious, we gonna work on this. So that's why things like even the frequency breathers, having that up your nose, it's, it's, it's like another thing that your body is like pointing more energy towards and focusing on. So that's another amplification, if you will, of why, um, alternate nostril breathing is, is really good. I always wondered why that happened at the beach. What, the mucus coming out in the water? Purpose of this necklace. Uh, the purpose of the necklace, it's the same exact emblem on every scaler that we have. So if you were to actually put this necklace in a glass of water and freeze it, or it doesn't even need to be in the water, it just seems to be on the bottom of the water. If you were to put it frozen and you place another glass that's, that doesn't have the necklace, you'll see more structures being formed in the water with the necklace than the, uh, than the one without the necklace. And we also did aura photos with the necklace as well. It has a really white light that emanates into your body and your aura. So it has a cleansing, something very powerfully cleansing to, uh, the necklace as well. I'm actually gonna download that video and, and then, uh, make a reel out of it and show you guys the before and after wearing the necklace and how it affects your, your energetic feel, your auric feel. So, yeah, it's, it's a pretty powerful necklace. I do not wanna take it off. Even when I went to the beach, like I'll have it in my hand. I'm like, I'm like, oh, man, I'm about to play in the ocean now. And we did a little mini session with it as well. Also, it'll come with a video tutorial of different use cases for it. So many different ways of utilizing it. Just placing water on it for at least like five minutes will help imprint the water, or even a minute, even a minute will make a huge difference. If you can do that for 30 days straight, if you have the necklace, cause some of you do. I saw somebody in here that I know in the back of my head has one. So I'm, I'm just letting them know. Do it for 30 days. Place it on your water before you take a sip, before you even drink or eat anything. Place it, place it on the necklace, just for a minute. Give it at least a minute. And in 30 days, if you have any gut issues or just quality of life, your quality of life will, will definitely be shifted. It'll be enhanced. It'll definitely be enhanced. And these, these are, these are ancient, these are ancient ways of doing things. These are ancient ways of doing things. Why do certain tables, and when you go to ancient preservatives, why are certain symbols on certain tables? Why is that? Why is that? Well, do you think maybe they had it in mind, be like, hey, we eat here, we drink here. So why aren't we infusing these geometrical patterns of energy into our food? Et cetera, where we eat, sleep, or drink, or whatever the case may be. Why? Why? Our Mayan ancestors, our Mexican ancestors, our African ancestors, our Chinese ancestors, our Guatemalan ancestors, men, our ancestors in general, they were again, more sophisticated than we, we let them to be. And unfortunately, even certain tribes today, don't even know, they don't even know of certain lost traditions. You know, certain, you know, people say that, oh, our ancient tribes were this way. Well, what about the tribes before them? Because they are actually the aftermath of unfortunately, either a major cataclysm with either flood or earthquake. And now it's actually gonna be fire and we're, we're seeing it in broad daylight here and now. But um, all those major catastrophes, if you will, wiped out a bunch of information. It really did. That's why we're at where we're at, because it's not just the information, but it's the people that make the information. They died, they died in whatever happens to earth with either the flood, the earthquake. And key figures, or some people say they, they, they just left, they just left here. And went to the other side, in a sense. And I don't mean death wise, literally either past the ice wall, like it was stated in eight, in the 1800s. And of all times, like why do the 1800s? Something very peculiar around that era was very preserved in a good way, in a good way. That's what I mean, in a very good way. And why do I say that? Because if we're having 1800 books, giving you the straight facts on certain geo, certain geographics, even talking about Mayans moving to Florida, which was even more confirmation, because they actually just found a Mayan pyramid here in Florida. I really need to post that video, because no one else is posting that video anywhere. So I'll post that video by the end of the week. But yes, there is a Mayan pyramids here in Florida. Untouched, by the way, untouched by a bunch of greasy hands from society. It's actually owned by a private, um, I don't know who owns it, but it's actually owned on private land, on an island, actually. Yes, Florida has many islands within Florida, a lot of people don't know that, but there are many islands here in Florida. Oh, that's a good one, our genes were preserved, which is super important, because the DNA is a library, right? So when certain things deja vu, et cetera. You know, that's a DNA acting on. That's it, that's the DNA, you're literally feeling, to me, what deja vu is, it's the subparticle DNA and the ripple down to the flesh, down to the, the aha, the aha moment, the breath. That is the ripple you're feeling from the DNA when you have those deja vu moments or, or um, or people, when, when you have the average individual that don't work on themselves energetically and they go to ancient sites and you see, you start seeing them like faint or whatever, because their bodies in shock with certain elements or memories, in a sense. You know, there's, there's videos out there where someone is touching ancient walls and they're like, oh, they fainted all of a sudden. What is that? That's your DNA. Your energetic field interacting environmentally, getting information. Like, hey overload, we, we've been here before, but damn, this is deep, you have deep connections here, boom, shock the body. Would scaler be considered EMF that Shungite would absorb? Hmm, what do you mean? I think you misphrased that question a little bit. Yeah. Interconnected energy frequency vibration rediscovered. Yeah, guys, so I'm gonna end it here as it gets darker and darker and I become invisible with the darkness. BrettDojo7, it's gonna be hosted here in Miami, if you're already part of Breath family. Uh, there's also a discount code if you're part of Breath family. Uh, so check that out in the members group. Also, it's gonna be here in Miami. Uh, we're not hosting anybody, by the way, it's just a location that we're going to. That we're gonna be there all day, that you're coming to. And it's a, it's a scaler, heavily scaler field environment. I'm still gathering up all the supplies, because this will be hub, this will be the hub of BrettDojo from now on, for sure, because I can control certain things. And I don't have to wait on anybody and I don't have to force certain things, et cetera. When people walk into this field, they are going to feel what they're going to feel in a good way. In a good way, and I mean that in all sincerity, and it's an amalgamation of all of you guys getting me to this point. And this is how I give back in a certain way. So I say that to say, also check out the Breath Partnership Program as well. Uh, I'm actually paying people to share scaler, share scaler with different businesses. There are, there's a lot of people putting their nine to five, especially with the huge recession that we're in technically. You know, it's a great moment in time to really scalify your business in all manners. Because your business is not just a material thing, it's also a spiritual thing. Don't get it twisted, don't get it twisted, please don't get it twisted. You know, all these big businesses that came to be, you know, just like the McDonald's, from rags to riches. All the way from Gucci, all the way from Louis Vuitton. A lot of people don't know, but these people came from rag, there's rags to riches stories. A lot of people don't even realize Gucci, Gucci started on the farm. Until they became bougie and did what they did. But Gucci started on the farm, a lot of, you know, when you sit down or uh, I wanna say you're privileged to be in the room of certain millionaires and billionaires. Years ago, I was privileged around that time before losing everything to a business partner. But a lot of these people low key have rags to riches stories. They're not just born into it. Some people are born into it and some people are born into it in terms of their families running things. But they don't know the extent and damage that's happening to certain families running things. So you can't just blame or attack, because I've seen it in broad daylight, you can't just attack a certain person, because, oh, your last name is this. Blah, 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 you know, this is blah, 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 blah. That person honestly may not really know. Some, some people are just born into and a ton, a ton, and a ton, an auto, a auto-generated income stream that they're just born into. And they have no control whatsoever, they, they just see the money that comes in and they're like, okay, this is, I'm part of the family, this is what I deal with. I'm just living la vida loca, right? Unless you're, you're uh, one of those Rothschild, I forgot his name already. But there's a kid in the Rothschild family that denounced and also changed his name, he was like, I want nothing to do with him. Et cetera, et cetera, so you know, everything's not black and white. You know, a lot of people think everything is black and white, but it's, it's really not black and white. There's so many layers into this human experience and we need to honor that. And to honor it is again, manage your own damn business, doing the best you can. Focus on what you can grow. And spend more energy into that, because that is so important in this time, this age. And redirect all that energy into building, 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 building. Harmonizing, 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 expanding, 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 collaborating, collaborating, collaborating. Focusing your energy on that. So important, guys, so important, because now I'm at a stage where I am working with any industry you know that comes to mind and utilizing scaler in that industry, down to apps, down to nursing homes. They're like private nursing homes, I, we honestly have to start with the private nursing homes, because you know, when they start seeing the results they're seeing. Unfortunately, it's not gonna be reciprocated in the public nursing homes, because they gotta get paid, right? That's why when all this happened, oh, old 92-year-old Jen fell down the stairs and broke her back, but we'll write COVID, she died of COVID instead and just get that insurance money. Yeah, that's the type of time the public sector is focused on. So the world of insurance has flipped upside down in that, in that regard. Alright guys, it's getting darker and darker out here. But if you guys have any questions about BrettDojo, about scaler, simply scaler, there's a bunch of videos and also research papers we add to the product page every, every week. So unfortunately, I mean, you can also visit on the website as well, you don't have to buy from the Instagram page. But if you visit the website and you go to the product page, you'll see articles, you'll see a bunch of research papers that we update every week. And also we have a scaler business page, so um, I'm gonna do my best, even while traveling, to update that. Uh, the next one that you're definitely going to be on the lookout for is in Croatia. Their gym is going on the scaler, I'm scalifying that gym down to their screens. We'll be playing scaler videos and you can actually blast scaler through video via video. That's why you guys feel a certain way when the audio is off. Do this next time, whenever you're in front of a TV and you're seeing the news being broadcasted. Turn off the volume and tell me how you feel. Turn off the volume and tell me how you feel. I'm, I'm sure some of you may have felt that, let's say you're walking through an airport and you see the news being played in, but you hear no volume, right? But you still feel something in your chest. For me, it's, I definitely feel something in my chest when that comes on. What's happening? They're blasting out certain, certain waves, certain longitude waves through the HD television. That is why there's HD television in all y'all homes. Why? When HD television came out, you notice every year, even year one, every year as year two hit, boom, it got cheaper. Year three, cheaper, year four, cheaper, to the point now, all you have to spend is a hundred bucks for a nice big flat screen HD television, right? How did we get here? Well, they wanted everyone to get one, have it in their homes, so they can blast out certain frequencies and certain waves through certain public, certain public channels, specifically any type of news, any type of public forum, protesting, et cetera. You're being blasted with disharmonious scaler waves. That's why it's good to turn off that damn TV. At the aspect of, at the aspect of news, turn off the news, turn off the news. If you wanna learn what's happening in the news, if you're really so gung ho about that, just read articles, read articles. And even do deeper research, because even the news be lying, right? So I even saw this video of the news, they were giving some details, et cetera. And this guy was saying like, look, look at this, I have newspaper right here, I even had this article pulled up on this website. You guys can go check it out, et cetera. And he's going art, like link for link, layer by layer, and the news anchor is lying on, on live television, just lying, lying, literally saying the exact opposite of what this man is reading on another news article. And also, he's also doing even deeper research, be like, hey, actually, all the way in 2013, this happened. So right now, they're just lying to you right in front of your face. So yeah, that's another thing about the news, it's so, so tricky. Super tricky. Alright guys, that's going to be it. Is there any more questions, anything about scaler? Anything in that regard? So guys, again, if you want to enter for the drawing, uh, the drawing is actually going to be on BrettDojo, which is August 28th. So I'll go live during BrettDojo Day, during BrettDojo, around that time, in between the break period. So that's another thing, if you're coming here, if you're coming live in person. Uh, there's a pool, again, there's also refreshments. Uh, there is also scaler tools to be utilized in this powerful vortex of an environment, oh my lord. Oh my god, so pool, there's also a sauna. So definitely tap in if you are interested. A lot of beautiful combinations before uh, bringing it to Mexico, we're gonna be bringing. And man, it's, it's just a blueprint. Uh, BrettDojo7 is going to be the blueprint of what I'm gonna be bringing into my, my breath work from now on. Literally. So man, I am so pumped and happy to just share with you guys in this sense. And remember, don't, don't damn, don't um, don't curse out that exhale. That exhale is coming back, backs you, so don't, don't fall for the mainstream or, or uh, you know, that's, that's the real new age. A lot of people say this is new age, that's new age. When you say new age, after talking to a bunch of priests, after talking to, and specifically, specifically talking to Ethiopian priests, you know, that have the real Bible, or I like, I like to say the real Bible. Et cetera, even monks, et cetera. People who say new age have no background or history of the human, human race. Because you look at the Sumerian tablet, tablets, what are they wearing on their head? What are they wearing on their head? What are they playing with? What are they energetically spiraling? You know? All these things, it's in human history, it's nothing new. But things like exhale the bullshit, you know, that in itself, in my opinion, is somewhat new age. Because the breath is sacred, to damn the breath. Or curse the breath in any way, it's like you're cursing yourself, because it comes back to you anyhow. And this is another realm of breath work that is not talked about. Because everyone is going mainstream, thinking a certain way. And this is other divisions and layers of the breath, I like to really expand and share with people. That it's more than one dimensional and get out that box. That box is what keeps them mundane. And that box is what keeps people thinking a certain way, that box is what keeps people in a certain way of being. And how do you break that box, even with your environment changing, right? What stays constant? You, your breath, the connection with breath stays constant. Even though your environment is forever changing, the soul and the breath connection stays constant. There is no one, there is no one without the other. So I say that to say, break away from that type of new age. Where everything is sacred. It's not just this is sacred, that's sacred, every damn thing is sacred. Because every damn thing or everything, every beautiful thing, the good, the ugly, the bad, has been influenced and interacted with what you call breath. Or spirit. Or a form of spirit, or a divination of your spirit, one form or the other. So if you found value in this and you guys wanna win a free scaler necklace. Or even a free ticket to BrettDojo, you know what, I'll spice it up, a free ticket to BrettDojo. Um, not in person though. Well, actually, yeah, in person or online. Yeah, why not? So in person or online, all you have to do is tag me, so that, this is a way of celebrating being tagged again. All you have to do is tag me and just give a testimonial of any breath work you have ever done with me. Just give me a shout out and yeah, it doesn't have to be this style of breath work, if you did another breath work. yeah, it doesn't have to be this style of breathwork, if you did another breathwork on another video, et cetera. Uh, you can also tag that video in there. So those are the parameters to get drawn, alright? And enter the sweepstakes. So all you have to do is tag me, give a testimonial, and share the breath, keep on sharing the breath, share this video if you found value in this. Share anything if you found value in anything that I share. It means a lot to me. I mean, we we, we, we went against a bunch of different forks in the road, including being S B, you know, to to IG. Not, I can't, I'm not, I, even if I say the full word, like, I can't even bring on certain things. So AI is at an all-time high. But the breath is as well. So keep that in mind. And I feel like you guys, I don't feel, I know, I know you guys, we all are part of the resonance and the shift that is going to come regardless. And that's what we saw in Japan. That's another beautiful confirmation in Japan. Just, just off the titles alone of articles saying that government has the resigned, just that one sentence, even though it's not entirely true. But even that one sentence alone, as long as that one sentence alone is echoing into the masses, what do you think is gonna happen? What do you think is going to happen? I, I'm gonna actually repost that same exact sentence with that article. And it's a beautiful thing. It's a beautiful thing, even though the prime minister is still the prime minister. But again, I pray that this live taught you a lot about joining certain communities, et cetera. You don't wanna just join a community, even though it's off-grid and it looks this and that, you know? Just because it's shiny and sparkling doesn't mean it's it's gold, right? But even though it may look gold, doesn't mean it holds that value, right? So I say that to say, breathe wisely, breathe consciously, and utilize what we did as well, that breathwork you can utilize in everyday situation. Uh, that's one of my favorites to do while walking. So if you're gonna utilize it while walking during the resting period, be still. So you can actively go back and forth with the nostrils, just like we did with the threes. But when you come to the resting point, be still, be still as much as possible. If you're walking, just stand still, take that moment in time, and then go again, go again into the next round, keep on walking. And what you're building there is contrast. And in the mental breathwork, we went over contrast and why that's important. And even in sun breathing, we go over contrast and why that's important. Life has contrast. There is night and day. Even when this, even when the moon wasn't even the moon, there is still shade, there is still quote-unquote night and day. There is still times of the day or times of the season where Antarctica finally gets a glimpse of darkness. Even though they're always getting the light. Alright, guys, I'm going invisible here. Thank you, guys, for sharing the breath. Again, tap in, peace and harmony, and be on the lookout for the scaler video that I'll be releasing soon. Peace.